Good. Yeah. Appreciate it.
How are we doing attendance wise, Michael?
We are getting there. I mean, it's a technical matter. The threshold for quorum is pretty low, but we still have people flowing in actively. So just get one minute.
Okay.
Let me start.
Rohan, TSG President, good to see you.
Nice to see you all again.
I think everybody is here.
And you're in. Okay, Mitch, you have you have well more than a quorum. So.
Great. Welcome, everyone. We are in a public session of Board of Trustees meeting on July 11th. Welcome. I'm hopefully, I know that we are all here by Zoom and I promise you I'll be there in person in October. Hopefully, we can all make an effort to be there in person in October. First note would be having the President's remark, Joanne. You're on mute. Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Welcome, everybody. As we all know, summer is historically a quieter time on campus. And in terms of personnel, that's certainly true, but we've been very, very busy this year, planning for the year to come. And there is growing excitement as we prepare for our students who it's hard to believe will be here in about six weeks. So in that context, we have both challenges and opportunities. Let me just say a word about the challenges. We all know, and I think it's important to acknowledge publicly that the institution and all institutions in this country face headwinds. In terms of the, as I described, it fewer eighteen year old beating hearts in America. So the challenges that we face in terms of enrollment or not hours alone, certainly, there are certain situations and contexts that are different, but basically, we all face significant enrollment headwinds as we go forward over the next few years. In terms of safety, we are continuing to improve safety measures on campus when our students return. I think they and their parents and families will be very pleased to hear about the changes we've made. We're also working with community and government leaders to address root causes of violence in our community. You know, as we understand, this is not a problem you can fix overnight. It's long in the making and long in the solution, but wouldn't we love to be able to say we are part of the forward looking cure to this? And I think we are going to be able to say that. Trying to offer programs in the in the city and in our neighborhood that will change the proclivity for people to want to engage in violence. But it's clear we can't do this alone. We're going to need not only a long view, but also cooperation from some of our institutional partners. Enrollment, we are really excited and looking forward to welcoming our new first year and transfer students already planning for next year, fall of 2024, to find new ways to introduce Temple more broadly. And the particularly special benefits of a temple education, I think those of you on this call, most of you on this call are here because you know that there is something special about us. I never want to take the position that there's no institution that shares some of the things that make us great. But the sum total of who we are really makes us special, and I'm really proud to be a part of this institution again this year. In terms of opportunities, that's what we're focusing on. What is it that makes us great? And you know, I was thinking about it. If you didn't have the headwinds, what would we brag about? There's stuff to brag about. In in terms of research, last year, we exceeded $300 million in research expenditures. For those of us, and I would include myself in that category, in a profession that doesn't measure itself by research expenditures, you have to really appreciate what that means. It's actually a big deal. And to exceed $300 million in research expenditures is a really great thing. And for us to have done it for the first time is really terrific. It builds on our reputation as one of as the force, fourth fastest, I'll say that correctly, fourth fastest in research growth from 2011 to 2021, that decade, we were fourth in terms of the upward trajectory. We are still processing final numbers, but our fundraising numbers for this last fiscal year look to put us at a record. I'm not going to say the number because I don't want to jinx this, but let's just say it looks to be good. But you know, with all of that context about what makes us great, the thing that is at the core of our looking forward are our students. And so I hope you had the chance to read the profiles of some of our remarkable graduates. And when I finish talking, I'm going to put it in the chat, which is the link to some of our student success stories. We've got Fulbright scholars, Goldwater scholars, future doctors, paramedics. You know, like you just forget about the kids we send off each year. And if you had a chance to sign on to commencement, I think you would have seen some of the energy that attended that day. The great feelings of our students and their families. And you know, we can get our head down and feel like there's so much to do and forget there's so much to celebrate. And obviously, I give a lot of credit to our faculty. They are the ones that are champions for our students. We've had some really great awards this past year, really cool stuff, a $20 million Lego gift to study early childhood education. And that not only gives us a chance to brag about our faculty and the accomplishments that they have professionally, but to think about the experiences for our students. And I, among the other things that I do during the day, been making calls to supporters of Temple. And in talking to them, I asked them, what has kept them connected to us? And almost to a person, they cite back to an experience they had as an undergraduate. Some graduate, but more undergraduate, life changing opportunities to have their mind expanded by some opportunity with a faculty member. So when I boast about our faculty members, it's not just to brag about them, but emphasize the connection they have to our future alumni. In terms of themes for the year ahead, we're trying to identify those themes that would really guide us. You know, when you have good themes, you know, it's easy to say, Matt fits. That does not, you know, which isn't to say that you have to be rigid, but we're trying to identify the things that will allow us to continue to move forward this year. Collaboration, I think, is really first key. And when I say that, I mean, collaboration writ large, because there are so many contexts in which that arises. But interdisciplinary work led by Provost Greg Mandel, I think, is really one of the things that by its nature is collaborative. It has been the focus of our planning efforts, and it will continue to be. I remember when I was Provost, it was harder than I could ever have mentioned. But we continue to work on the ways in which we can not only encourage people coming to Temple, but those who are already here to work across schools and colleges because uh, that's the future. When we think about the way of the future of the world of our graduates are going to find, they're not going to want to have just one major. They're going to want to be able to sort of transcend different disciplines. So we're working there. We also want to work collaboratively administratively in this world of shrinking resources in which we find ourselves. And may I just say that when I became Dean of the law school, the law school faced shrinking resources. But I digress. But we also need to figure out administratively in this world of shrinking resources, how to collaborate, how to make sure we have increased business efficiencies, streamlining processes. So we're looking at all that, all the while, making sure that no one gets the feeling that the roof is coming off. And so that becomes a real challenge messaging. You know, we're not going out of business. We're not going to close. We just have to belt tighten and we have to be very careful about what we can prioritize and what we can't. But we have to make sure that people understand that this is an institution that absolutely, I have no doubt, will survive. In terms of other things, commitment to our themes and values is something that's really important to me. Many of you have heard me say, and I, you know, as a leader, you you get a line, you kind of go with it, it feels good. You don't want to repeat yourself. So I want to be careful about that. But I think that one of the things I want to say here is the recognition that there is a part of Temple University that keeps people here. When they might have other opportunities, some categories of which might even seem more appealing, but they don't leave us because the who we are is something that really attaches them. And so I think we want to make sure that everybody feels that. I don't feel like we've lost it, but I want to be sure that people feel it. And so the commitment to our values is something that is sort of below the surface. The culture, making sure people know why we think that this is a place where they should want to come and should stay. And doing that in terms of being forward looking and listening to the conversation about what's an educational institution of the future going to look like. I think it's obvious, it can't look exactly like it looks now. So we have to figure out what part of us will stay and what part of us needs to be different. And those questions are not easy or obvious, but they're crucial. And so I I draw back to our students. This is what most of what we're asking about is about. Temple recently hosted a meeting of the Association for Undergraduate Education at Research Institutions. It's U E R O, undergraduate education research universities, pronounced U R U. It was a gathering of those who provide leadership to undergraduate education at R one and R two universities. And I had the privilege of welcoming them to our campus. Thank you, Trustee Charles. On the terrace of our beautiful Charles Library, it was a lovely afternoon and got to see the whole city. It was great. We should try to bring more people there. And U R U and several partners sponsored a reexamination of a 1998 report called the Boyer Commission Report that proposed the a rethinking and a reinvention of undergraduate education for research universities. And the new report, Boyer 2030, looks at undergraduate education in light of the many changes over the last 25 years. And it was really exciting to be hosting the place where people were coming together to talk about the future. And so clearly, not just spurred by that, I'm proud to say, separate from that, we are doing things like that. We are looking at our general education program and our students' first year experience. And how to be committed to the city of Philadelphia and the community. But so it operates so excitingly at so many different levels in terms of shaping the dreams of our undergraduates. But it was really wonderful to host that conference and to know that we are committed to innovation and discovery, not only in research, but in teaching and academics and all the things that we do. And so I I close with this observation that that the temple that has kept me here for thirty some odd years is the temple that I am excited to think about over the next decade, long past me in this role. We are, we are special and we're really special in this region. And when you think about people who don't want to be in Manhattan and people who don't want to be in the district, and there's just a lot about what we offer that is very distinctive and special. We are the combination of a bunch of strengths. And so our challenge that I hope to help lead over the next year is ensuring that we use that recognition, that strength, that identity to be the best version of Temple that we can be. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Joanne. I I'd just like to add, I mean, we we constantly in our boardroom worry about the down downside and and we were always kind of putting out fires. But when we as trustees walk the campus and see how many lives we change every day, we realize that our mission is is really special. And when I spent some time on our listening tour, talking to faculty members and deans and alum and parents and students. As you just said, they could have gone anywhere. Our faculty members could teach anywhere. Our deans could go anywhere. Our students could go anywhere. But they love who our mission, they love what we do. And our enrollment may be down, but we still are changing. We may not be changing 39,000 lives, but we're changing 33,000 lives. And those are important. It makes us as trustees feel good about our time that we spend at Temple University. And and thank you for helping us focus on what we do well, because I know we focus a lot on what we don't do well. So thank you. I'd also, sorry, I did not recognize that our new faculty faculty senate president, I'm going to try to say it properly. Shoray Amini, welcome. We are thrilled to have you here. And and if I didn't get your name right, I promise I'll try next time to do a little better than that. You're on mute.
That was great. And it's I'm happy to be here.
Thank you. Okay, so with with that, let's move on to the minutes of May ninth. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move.
Second, I have a second. Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving to the Governance and Nominating Committee, trustee Lon Greenberg and trustee Phil Richards.
Yep. Phil, you want me to take it?
You take it, Ron.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I have the pleasure with Phil's acquiescence to bring this motion to the attention of the board, and it relates to the election of three individuals to our Board of Trustees. That recommendation and motion is as follows, that the Board of Trustees, upon the recommendation of the Governance and Nominating Committee, elect Alan Cohen, Susan Suzanne Halex and Amy Larovir for term up to the Board of Trustees for terms effective immediately. And I so move.
Second.
Having a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Michael, we're going to bring into the meeting on.
No, Mr. Chair, Mike Breeze sends his 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 thanks and regards, and Amy is traveling, so we will not do that.
All right. I missed misread your email. Okay. Moving to Finance and Investment Committee, Joe Cardino or Chris McDickel, who wants to take that one?
I'm going to start it and then Joe will take it over from item six forward. Starting with number one, item three is a recommendation that the Board of Trustees adopt the university operating budget for fiscal year 2324 as set forth in Agenda Reference three, and I so move.
Having a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Item four is a recommendation that the Board of Trustees approved the resolution to select a spending rule for the endowment assets to set forth in Agenda Reference four, and I so move.
Second.
Having a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Item five is a recommendation that the Board of Trustees, upon recommendation of the Finance and Investment Committee, authorize the amendment of the university's investment policy to reflect the statement amendment as described in Agenda Reference five, and I so move.
Having a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The final item I'll be covering here is a recommendation that the Board of Trustees, upon the recommendation of the Finance and Investment Committee, approve an additional contribution of $250,000 to the William C Dunkleburg Al Fund to our student run investment portfolio with the funding and financing source being the bank cash operating account. This is described in Agenda Reference six, and I so move.
Second.
There we go. Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I I would like to say, Chris, that is one of the most enjoyable moments of my time as a trustee, sitting and listening to our bright Al Fund students and how successful that successful they have been in the past. They have beaten some of the smartest minds on Wall Street.
I couldn't I couldn't agree more. It's a real, it's a really win win program for us. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Number seven.
Number seven. Mr. Chairman, I reckon I recommend and move on behalf of the Finance and Investment Committee that we authorize the officers to proceed with the Agenda Reference seven, which is the design and renovation of SOBOL and prosthetic spaces at School of Dentistry to cost not to exceed $3,021,950. I so move.
Second.
Moved and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Chairman, I recommend and move that the Board of Trustees, upon the recommendation of the Finance and Investment Committee, as outlined in Agenda Reference eight, authorize the officers to proceed with the Mazor Glad felt the restroom upgrades at a cost not to exceed $5,800,000. I so move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I recommend and move that the Board of Trustees, upon the recommendation of the Finance and Investment Committee, authorize the officers to proceed with the bio life building capital improvements at a cost not to exceed $5 million. I so move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I recommend and move that the Board of Trustees authorize the officers to proceed with the acquisition of 2010 North Broad Street at a cost not to exceed $2,433,371. I so move.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I recommend and move that the Board of Trustees authorize the officers to proceed with the acquisition of 2022 North Broad Street at a cost not to exceed $2,222,202. I so move.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Moving to Academic Affairs, trustee James Kachetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have the recommendation that the Board of Trustees, upon the recommendation of the Academic Affairs Student Success and Diversity Committee and the Acting President pursuant to the procedures outlined in the Temple University Faculty Handbook and the Collective Bargaining Agreement between Temple University and the Temple Association of University Professionals regarding the granting of faculty tenure, recommend that the Board of Trustees grant tenure to the faculty on the list on the file in the Office of the Provost. And I so move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And our second recommendation, Mr. Chair, is that the Board of Trustees, upon the recommendation of the Academic Affairs Student Success and Diversity Committee, authorize the officers to implement the academic program action as described in Agenda Reference thirteen. I so move.
A second. Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's the conclusion of my report.
Thank you. Thank you, Jane. Okay, moving to External Affairs and Development Committee, Brett Perkins.
Mr. Chairman, it's not, I'm not sure that Brett is with us in his absence still. Would you be willing?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Recommendation is that the Board of Trustees, upon the recommendation of the External Affairs Development Committee and the Gift Acceptance Committee, approve the naming of an Innovation Lab with extended pledge terms in the New Klein College of Media and Communication, as described in Agenda Reference fourteen, and I so move. Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that the Board of Trustees, upon the recommendation, the External Affairs and Development Committee approve the revised gift acceptance policies described in Agenda Reference fifteen, and I so move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Third recommendation, Mr. Chairman, is that the Board of Trustees, upon the recommendation of the External Affairs and Development Committee, approve the revised endowment intern fund overview and minimum guidelines as described in Agenda Reference sixteen, and I so move.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Includes my my report, Mr. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to Temple Health System, trustee Lon Greenberg.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mitch. I lost track of that one.
That's on page four.
Three, four. There it is. All right. Again, I have a pleasure of bringing to the board the budget and capital and operating budgets for the health system. And I move and the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the recommendation of the Board of Directors of Temple University Health System and adopt the Temple University Health System capital and operating budgets for fiscal years two 2023 to 2024 as set forth in Agenda Reference seventeen, and I so move.
Second.
Having a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving to the Treasures Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I bring one recommendation to the committee. The recommendation is that the investment reports for the three months ended March 31, 2023 be received. Said reports being included and identified as described in Agenda Reference eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so we are done the Treasury Report. Let's we're moving on to the our guest speakers. President of Faculty Senate.
Was I supposed to speak? I I was not.
Sorry, go ahead.
You you were, you, we would love to hear you just say a few words.
Sure, sure. So I have been at Temple for 24 years. And you know, I completely agree with what our president said at the beginning, that other places that our faculty could go, but we stay at Temple because of first, because of our students, because of our colleague faculty. And there is something about Temple. I have actually been in many institutions within Philadelphia. It started with Thomas Jefferson University. I graduated from Penn. And then I worked for Haneman University and I came to Temple and made this my own. And I have enjoyed every minute that I have been here teaching, doing research, and now I'm doing more administration. And if you guys have a question for me, but I can go on and on and tell you about what I work on and what I teach.
But it's wonderful to hear your passion.
Yes.
Every time we that I know that I talk to your fellow faculty members and our deans and our students. It is there is an emotion that people have about Temple University that, just as Joanne says, keeps us here and keeps us strong and keeps us going. So thank you very much, and we look forward to you attending more of our meetings.
Absolutely. I'd be happy to. I just wanted to give one anecdote that Joanne was mentioning is is that the best day of my academic career have been when one of my students, who I was teaching virology course, ended up in medical school. And she donated $200 to Temple in my name. And to this day, that's the best day of my life, that this person took her first salary and donated $200, which was fantastic. Never forget it. So we have a lot of students who we have helped and they have helped us grow and I am proud to be here.
Thank you. Thank you for those words. Turning to the President of Student Government. I'm going to promise to get your name right, but this time I'm going to let you say your name and move and give us say some words. And you're on mute.
All right, my name is Rohan Katka for the record.
I can get that one.
Right. So thank you, Mr. Chairman and the board. As we draw closer to the semester, I would like to express my gratitude to President Epps and Provost Mandel for meeting with Lauren and I before we began our study abroad programs and attentively listening to our needs. Since our last email, the President's office has informed us that plans have begun to incorporate more gender inclusive restrooms in several additional buildings across campus, including Tuttleman, the College of Liberal Arts and the College of Engineering Buildings. But as we draw our attention to June 29th, when the Supreme Court reversed and the College of Engineering buildings. But as we draw our attention to June twenty-ninth, when the Supreme Court reversed the practice of affirmative action, the spotlight is now on universities once again to proactively react and navigate the new legal landscape. Thus, we are hopeful and excited to work with university leaders, stakeholders, members of the mission process, students, and community members to continue to, continue to highlight the rich diversity Temple has to its disposal and the culture that it brings. Um, affirmative action for years has helped bridge the gap between various communities and has provided a more equal access to education. And it's integral to celebrate the diversity of Temple and, like, students, staff, and faculty. We look forward to helping the university uphold its diversity and inclusion practices. Thank you all.
Thank you. Um, before we move on, um, Joanne, I'd just like to personally thank you for your leadership, for you stepping up when we really needed you. Um, you have not dropped the ball. Um, you bleed Temple. Um, you've been at Temple for, as you say, thirty-seven years. I thought it was forty, but who's counting? Um, and, you know, your presence and your leadership has, has been able to get us by and will continue to get us into the future. And I just want to thank you for agreeing to be our Acting President. Um, I'm going to turn it back to you.
Thank you so much. I, I really appreciate it. Um, that means a lot. I just wanted to tell all of you when I was talking, I said I would put in the chat a, um, link to our student success. It turns out, we have technical reasons that I can't do that because there's not everyone option here. So I will ask Michael Gephardt to send that out to you, but I hope when you have a moment, you'll click on it and just be reminded of why we feel so proud of who we are. And Mitch, thanks so much for that. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, do we have any old or new business? Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved. Again.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great summer. Um, be proud of being part of Temple University because I am every day.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone. Have a good.
Bye, everyone.
Thank you. Take care.
Thank you.